Okay, it is 7:32 PM on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. Good evening. My name is Christian Klein. I'm the Chair of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to call this meeting of the board to order. I'd like to confirm all members and anticipated officials are present. Members of the Board of Appeals, Roger Dupont.
Here.
Patrick Hanlon.
Here.
Kevin Mills.
Here.
Aaron Ford.
Here.
And Stephen Revellak.
Here.
Thank you all. Officials from the town, Rick Valarelli, the Board's Administrator.
Here.
Vincent Lee from the Inspection Services.
Here.
And Kelly Lenam, the Senior Planner from the Department of Planning and Community Development.
Here.
Good to see you all. I'd just like to verify that there are people here for the three hearings we have scheduled for this evening. Is there someone here appearing on behalf of 12 Christine Road?
Here.
Thanks, sir. Is there someone here appearing on behalf of 34 Marathon Street?
Here.
Here.
And appearing on behalf of 53 Pine Ridge Road.
Here.
Okay, so this open meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020. The order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during each public hearing. For this meeting, the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom application with online and telephone access as listed on the agenda posted to the town's website identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Other participants are participating by computer, audio, or telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you through screen name or another identifier. Please take care not to share personal information. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask you to please maintain decorum during the meeting, including displaying an appropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. As Chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy, now gonk one word, meaning swift waters, the Board acknowledges that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodlines of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massasoia territories today. Start this evening with several administrative items, including the approval of minutes, the approval of decisions, and possibly discussion of proposed revisions to the rules and regulations of the Board. These items relate to the operations of the Board and as such will be and will be conducted without input from the general public. The Board will not take up any new business on prior hearings, nor will there be the introduction of any new information on matters previously brought before the Board. After introducing each item, I'll invite members to provide comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care not to identify yourself. So with that, moving over to the agenda. Agenda item number two. So this is the approval of meeting minutes. So Mr. Valarelli has circulated to members of the Board the minutes which have been prepared for the March 11th, April 8th, April 13th, and April 20th meetings, those four meetings. I believe several people have submitted some edits and corrections to those minutes. Are there any further corrections or input from the Board on those four sets of minutes?
Steve Revellak, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Steve.
I noticed one typo that I did not catch earlier.
Okay.
So this would be in the minutes for April 13th. And on page 22, in the 1234th paragraph where I'm speaking, Mr. Revellak states he made a trip over to Ryder Street. Ryder should be spelled with a Y. Nothing, and I have nothing further.
Got it, Steve. Thank you.
Okay. So with that correction to the April 13th minutes, I have a motion to accept the minutes from March 11th, April 8th, April 13th, that's just amended, and April 20th.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. I'll do a vote of the Board to approve the minutes. Mr. Dupont. I can see your lips moving. I don't hear you, but I got you. Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. Rourke is not with us this evening. Mr. Revellak.
Hi.
Mr. Ford.
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye. That moves us to item number three, which is the approval of the decision for 59 Mount Vernon Street. This is a decision that was very well prepared by Mr. Hanlon from our Board. I know that was circulated and there were a couple of comments that had come back on that to Mr. Valarelli. Are there any further comments on the proposed decision for 59 Mount Vernon Street? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the decision for 59 Mount Vernon Street as submitted and edited.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Vote of the Board, Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Revellak.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So that decision is approved. That will now be the signature will go out through DocuSign to the Board and then we will have that filed with the Town Clerk's Office. Brings us to item four, which is discussion of proposed revisions to rules and regulations. We've discussed this a little bit last time. I don't think there's been any adjustment since that time. So unless anybody has anything they would specifically like to address in regards to that, I was just going to pass on that for this evening. We will pass on that. Okay, we're now turning to the public hearings on tonight's agenda. Here's some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announce each agenda item, I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves and make their presentation to the Board. I'll request that members of the Board ask what questions they have on the proposal. And after the Board's questions have been answered, I will open the meeting for public comment. So the first hearing is agenda item number five, Docet 3657, 12 Christine Road. And if I can ask the applicant to identify themselves and tell us what they would like to be doing.
Good evening, Board. My name is Fernando Carrero. I'm the owner of the Land Recontracting here in Arlington. And the property that I am presenting to you for some modifications is 12 Christine Road. And the proposed on the plot plan, I want to put a farmer's porch in front of the house. And right now, meeting the requirement of the setback, I could get about four feet point one to keep the setback around 25.1. And my proposal is to bring it to six feet so that the new setback will be at 23 feet. Because me personally, my own home, I have four feet and it's not something that we can very much use because it's a little too small. So I wanted to give it a little bit more space so that people could sit out there and live a bit more comfortably. And for the curb appeal, I think the house would look really presentable with this farmer's porch and usable, especially being in a circle where it's a lot of kids will be able to play outside. And it seems like a lot more parents these days are spending more time in their front yards and the kids riding their bikes, especially in that neighborhood. So to me, I'm looking for that additional foot and a half or so to get me to six feet for the front porch, the 20.1 feet will remain the same.
Is that the only aspect of the project that requires a special permit?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Valarelli.
Yes.
Just wanted to confirm. So the Board may increase the depth of our front porch into the front setback no farther than, I believe it's two feet. Is that correct? By special permit?
That's correct. So by right, he can do a 25 square foot farmer's porch vestibule. Anything larger than that that protrudes into the required setback is allowed by special permit only.
Thank you. Are there? Before I ask for questions, the Board just wanted to make sure that the applicant received the today, the report prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development. Just wanted to make sure you had received and reviewed that.
Yes.
Okay. Are there questions from the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
Just to try to clarify what is and isn't before us. I gather, I take it that the only thing that is that is the reason why the applicant is here is the desire to get extra space on the porch. This is a project in the process of construction. It doesn't already exist. And I assume it's true that every, except with respect to the porch, everything else is, could be done by right. And what I'd like to clarify is whether or not it's within the province of this application for the Board to consider anything other than the unique issues that arise from the question whether to approve the porch or not. In other words, there are other kinds of things that may be at issue. Open space could be an issue. Who knows? But I gather that those things, except insofar as they relate to the reasons for either extending, allowing for this porch or not, wouldn't be relevant to our hearing tonight. Is that correct?
That is my understanding. Mr. Valarelli nodding in the affirmative as well.
Correct, Mr. Hanlon.
Are there other questions or comments on the Board? Mr. Revellak.
Yeah, just one comment and a couple of questions. So the comment regarding the application, these form where we, where the six special permit criteria are listed and there's space for the applicant to answer. I do appreciate the effort to cite specific sections of the bylaw that are applicable. It looks like we may have, the citations might have been from an earlier version of the bylaw. Just basically, you know, it was reorganized and the section numbers are different. I mean, not an issue here, but just for, you know, just, I mentioned this for, so the applicant is aware and if they never ever need to come back before or in the future for a different project. So as far as questions, so in terms of what is the total square footage of, total square footage of the projection into the minimum yard? I gather the intention is to make the porch 20 feet by six feet?
20.1 by six feet, yes.
20.1 by six, and it's one, so 20 by 1.9 would be the actual projection?
That is correct.
Okay, so about 39 square feet.
Correct.
No further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. One last look around the Board. Seeing none. At this time, I'll open the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments will be taken as they relate to the matter at hand and should be directed to the Board for the purpose of informing our decision. Members of the public will be granted time to ask questions and make comments. The Chair asks of those wishing to address the Board a second time during any particular hearing, please be patient, allow of those wishing to speak for the first time to go ahead of them. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participant tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the meeting host. You'll be asked to give your name and address, and you'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the Chair. Please remember to speak clearly. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed, or the time allocated by the Chair has ended, the public comment period will be closed. Board and staff will do our best to show documents that are relevant to the discussion. With that, I see there's one gentleman with his hand up. If you could go ahead, sir.
I'm Robert Kacuda from 28 Stone Road. I just have a quick question. If the porch is extended, the upper floors in the renovation are extended also?
No.
Mr. Carrero?
No, they're not. Just a porch.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a single story porch with a roof over it.
Correct. Correct.
If I can quickly find this and display it here. This is the front elevation of the proposed of the house. This is the
That is correct.
Proposed, and then this is the side view. This is the portion here on the front.
Correct.
Thank you. Are there further questions from the public on this hearing? Around, I see none. If we flip to the second Zoom page. Nobody waiting? Okay, so with that, the public comment period for this hearing will be closed. So ask the Board to turn to the the memorandum from the Department of Planning and Community Development, which I will quickly display in a second. Whoops, that is not the right document. That is the zoning bylaws. Let's see if I can do this better this time. Why is this not showing right? Oh, no, you are seeing it. Okay. So this is the the house and then the recommendations from the planning and community development. They recommend that the zoning board of appeals request the following materials from the applicant: a completed dimensional and parking information worksheet, a completed open space growth floor area information worksheet, and plans identifying dimensional details for the proposed porch. And I believe that some of that information I may have. So this is the plan from the applicant showing that the extends six feet and a width of 20 feet. And then as I had, I had prior contact with the applicant who had requested to provide some information about the existing conditions, the current conditions, which you can see currently that the house has no, there's nothing on the front of the house as it's under construction. And the there have been some adjustments to the the application page in regards to those items that were identified in the memorandum, the dimensional parking information worksheet, and the open space growth floor area worksheet. But that was all that was requested in the, from the Department of Planning and Community Development. Is there further comment on this application from the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dupont.
So just by way of clarification, and I apologize because I tried to print out the application materials. And for some reason, the formatting on it, and I couldn't do anything with it, was it was legal sized paper, but it was sideways. So I don't know how that happens, but it actually happened to two out of the three matters we're dealing with tonight. So I'm not sure exactly what page we're on, but it says the application for special permit is made in accordance with whatever. And then it says special permit criteria, and it describes it. It says renovated front porch with roof to project five feet from the house. And then it makes reference, and I think that the Department of Planning also caught this. And it says existing porch is small and uncovered with no roof. So I just wanted to clarify, you know, what that is because it's saying five feet from the house, but I think we're talking about six feet.
That's my understanding as well. Mr. Carrero?
That is correct. Yes, the existing porch that was there was literally a set of concrete steps. There is about six feet wide and projected from the house about four feet. So what I'm looking for is six feet for the farmer's porch, not five feet. I apologize for that.
Okay.
And this is a plan that, the drawing had been provided. This was, Mr. Carrero, I believe is the condition prior to the renovation, and it shows the existing porch, which was
That was the proposed porch with no roof covering on it, of course, as soon as, you know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, exactly. So I just wanted to give it some covering.
Okay.
For me to feel like the porch was worth usable space, the four feet was just a little tight. And again, it's based, because my house, my farmer's porch is four feet. My wife don't really sit out there because it's just a little too small.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
This is Pat. This sort of is picking up a little bit on Mr. Dupont's comment, but assuming that if the Board were to approve this, we usually approve, we usually have a condition requiring the requiring the action that we're authorizing to be done in accordance with certain plans. And I want to make clear, since there are various plans asking for various things that are, that are somewhere in this application, that we understand and everybody understands exactly which is, which is the thing that we're there to be, that's there to be approved. And so I just want to, I assume that it's what you just showed that has the word family room prominently put on it, and there's a, there's a notation here for a six-foot porch. And there's also the elevations. But I just, I just would like to make sure that we understand which are the documents that are being approved as part of this application and which are documents that relate to something else and that are not operative at this point. I wonder if Mr. Valarelli can help with that.
Yes, Mr. Hanlon. So the applicant has started a construction project. All the stuff he's doing now is by right. And what he wants to do is just increase the size of the front entry, a farmer's porch, if you will, to project six feet off of the foundation by 20 feet wide. And that will project into the minimum front yard setback. Instead of it being 25 feet as required, I think it will be 23 and change. But everything else the applicant is doing is by right. I hope I answered your question.
And just in terms of the papers we have before us, we have one thing that has a prominent notation, six feet off the house, which is a kind of a plan view. And we have another one, the elevations that were shown earlier. Are those the documents that the applicant is supposed to be observing as he installs this porch?
Yes. So unfortunately, there is a little bit of confusion with the the application and the information that's on the application. But in fact, what the Board is or may consider tonight for approval is in fact a farmer's porch that projects no more than six feet off of the foundation line in the front of the house and is no wider than 20 feet.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. And this maybe for you, Rick. Is the, is the request six feet off of the foundation or off of the face of the building? Because it looks like, when you look at the left elevation on sheet one, that the face of the building projects about two feet in front of the basement wall, and then the porch projects six feet in front of the the wood frame wall. So that would put it about eight feet off the foundation. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand what the dimension is supposed to be tied to.
So, Mr. Carrero, you can address that. And just keep in mind that the Board is looking to be very precise on what you are proposing.
Yes. So the projection of six feet is off the face of the building, which is the furthest point of the building and not the section that is, that is setback, as you can see from the side elevation. So right now, the setback is from the face of the building, not from the foundations, from the face, overall face of the building. Okay. Maybe it's just some language that needs to be clarified in the, in the, in the request, which is, I think was said to be six feet off the foundation. Well, that, that problem needs to be fixed.
Okay. Okay, so that will then bring are there further comments or questions from the Board? Okay.
Actually, one, one, Mr. Steve Revellak, Mr. Chair. Going back to the planning department memo regarding the dimensional worksheets. Now, I know we're just considering a porch.
Yep.
But, and it is a rather small, it is a, it is a, you know, it's not a big protrusion into the front yard. We're looking at 40 square feet. But, you know, technically, you know, that is removal of open space or landscaped of some sort of open space from the front yard. And I would be curious if, how the Board members would feel about a condition that the, you know, that open, that open space calculations be provided and be confirmed by inspectional services to comport with the dimensional regulations for the district.
I believe that sounds appropriate. Okay, so the Board has, we have sort of three standard conditions that we apply to special permits. The first reads, "The final plans and specifications approved by the Board for the permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the Building Inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. If no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals." The second is, "The Building Inspector is hereby notified that he is to monitor the site. Should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time he determines that violations are present, and the Inspector of Buildings shall proceed under Section 3.1 of the zoning bylaw, under the provisions of Chapter 40, Section 21D, and institute noncriminal complaints. If necessary, the Inspector of Buildings may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with Section 3.1. And number three is, "The Board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit grant." And then the, there are other conditions that we have sometimes applied. So the two that tend to me to sort of address the questions that have been raised by the Board. One is, "The applicant is to provide a site plan indicating and dimensioning the area" One is the applicant is to provide a site plan indicating and dimensioning the area or areas of the existing and proposed site that comply with the requirements for usable open space is indicated in section two of the zoning bylaw of the town of Arlington and in inspection services department for review and approval. And the other would be is that the applicant is to provide revised and signed dimensional and parking information and open space slash gross floor area sheets correcting any deficiencies discussed at the hearing to the inspection services department for review. Are there any further conditions that the board would ask to consider?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, Mr. Dupont.
I just along the lines of what Mr. Ford had mentioned. Is it something that we should consider having language that references the fact that that six feet is being measured from the front of the building and not the foundation?
We can certainly do that.
And and the reason I ask that question is, do we have a plan that explicitly shows that I I'm again, not sure that I saw that, but it may well be there. So did we have sufficient, if we're saying build according to this particular plan, do we have that particular plan that demonstrates the six feet by 20 feet away from the face of the building?
So we have this document.
So it's just going to be in accordance with the plan that's been submitted?
Yep.
Okay.
So if I say the border sticks the front porch to the dimensions presented on 12 underscore Christine underscore front underscore porch underscore size PDF as submitted. And then that would restrict it to these these dimensions, six feet off the house and 20 feet side to side.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Hanlon.
Just just so that, as just a means of advice, is that both of the discussion we just had and ultimately in writing the opinion, it's helpful to put a title on these documents so that it can be unambiguously referred to without looking at the at the file name from the computer. And I would like to ask Mr. Carrera to take note of that and to do that in the future.
Will do. Thank you.
Is there any further comment or question from the board? As for a motion from the board in regards to this application.
Mr. Chairman.
Hanlon.
I move that the application be approved subject to the conditions that you've just read.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Do I have a second?
Second.
So in the absence of Mr. O'Rourke, I will ask Mr. Revellack to vote on this application. So we have a full quorum of five. So the motion is to approve with the conditions that were previously indicated. Mr. Dupont.
I.
Mr. Hanlon.
Hi.
Mr. Mills.
Hi.
Mr. Revellack.
I.
And the chair votes I. The application is approved with the condition stipulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us to agenda item number six, which is docket 365534 Marathon Road. And so if I could ask the applicants to identify themselves and tell us what they would like to do.
That's Ian Frank McGovern.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Klein and members of the board. We're we own 34 Marathon Street, and we have a daughter who lives there. She's lived there since we've owned it. And we would like to construct two small dormers within the footprint of the house on the third floor. The third floor currently has one bedroom, has walk upstairs already there. One bedroom, but there's no bathroom on the on the third floor. And we'd like to construct two small dormers to be able to put a bathroom and and then a work area. So so somebody working remote could work work within that. The the dorm is, let's see, it's this house, it's in in our family. And like I said, we our daughter lives there. And we're also planning to completely redo the outside of the house. If anyone's driven by, the shingles are in pretty disrepair. And so we're we're planning to completely reshingle, re-side the house and as well. So that it will look much better from the curbside appeal. And and no, no change to the footprint.
Just briefly put up on the screen here, the set of plans that was provided by the architect. So this is the existing house, this is the existing upper floors, and this these are the two dormers that are being proposed. So this is the current front elevation, and this is the proposed elevation with the addition of the dormer. Is the existing side elevation and the proposed side elevation with the two small shed dormers. This is a perspective of the current house and the perspective with the addition of the two dormers. Are there questions and comments from the board? Mr. Mills.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Did we get an accurate estimate on the space under seven foot on the attic with the dorms in place? I thought that was an outstanding question.
We have from the applicant as a part of their application and indication that the proposed upper floor. So the second floor is listed as 1,017 square feet, and the third floor is listed as being 186 square feet. And it appears from this that they are well, that they are, that the the listed square footage for the third floor would be 705 square feet, which would be in excess of the 50% of the floor below. But they have not provided a specific plan that or section that indicates exactly what the the area in the proposed attic floor would be. Mr. Valorelli, do you have any other information from the applicant that would clarify the actual square footage of the attic floor?
I do not. I noted that the application, the numbers are incorrect. But nevertheless, the the board could approve pending the the attic space doesn't exceed a half story.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I also noticed that the the version of the open space floor gross floor area form that was filled out also i- is was apparently an out of date one, and it includes the as seven feet, three inches, as it once was.
Yep.
Which raises a question as to exactly what it is that is actually being reported there. If that if 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 they were actually doing that, rather than following the seven feet rule that we now have, those numbers would be would be incorrect in a way that would be hard to tell what they are. So for that reason also, I would be concerned to make sure that we're 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 okay with this and make sure that these are that these are right. Procedurally, basically, if if this isn't right, and we've got a problem here, and we approve this, the applicant has to come back to us for an amendment of its of the special permit. What what I'm trying to, I don't see any, I'm trying to figure out a way of handling this and being sure that we're with that we are conforming with the bylaw without imposing on the applicant extra steps that would just delay this far more than is necessary. Because we don't have this clear right now. And I just would like to throw it up to my colleagues. If if it's possible to get this to get this resolved in a few days. And we could come back and know when we're giving this the permit rather than taking a risk that there'll be a problem later on that will be another month or six weeks of delay that we might be, it might be better to do that. But I I leave it up to the suggestions of others. I just would like the procedure to be as as smooth and as efficient as possible and not to cause unnecessary hardship.
Mr. Valorelli. If if the board was to approve this with the condition that the that the applicant provide documentation showing conformance with the half story requirement for an attic and they are unable to to meet that criteria, what would happen at inspection services?
Well, the board needs approval, I'm sorry, the applicant needs approval from the board to increase the nonconformity due to the lack of open space usable. Inspection services still has a whole checklist of things that are going to apply to this job and every job that comes before them. So the only thing that's stopping them that way that in special services has no control over is the fact they're extending the nonconformity due to lack of usable open space. ISD will check, make sure that the attic space does not exceed a half story. We have had instances where they did exceed it when they were told not to, and they have come back before the board. Very rarely. So to answer your question, if the board approves this, inspection services has all the other stuff, too numerous to mention. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dupont.
So it's just a matter of, it seems to me, custom. I mean, normally, if we do have a question that involves the dimensional part of an application, and we're not clear on what it is. In the past, I feel like we've always said to come back to us with more concrete information and without unreasonable delay. And I think that that's what Mr. Hanlon was also saying, but I'm just concerned that if on the one hand, we were to say, yeah, we agree and will approve this, subject to making sure that it meets the requirements for seven feet and a half story, that somehow, if in fact it were way off, you might have a situation where that they really couldn't do what it was that they proposed to do. And that seems to be sort of the tail wagging the dog to me. I'd rather have somebody come back in and say, here, we've clarified this, and we've confirmed that this meets the seven feet requirement. And therefore, now you can go ahead and vote. And the other question I have is, I'm not entirely sure, and I know that these forms are confusing. But on one of the pages, it says that landscaped open space percentage, and it gives a number of 3,265. And that's repeated four times. And so I guess, you know, we're always wondering about whether or not they have any usable open space to begin with. And I'm not sure that that's clear. And so I'd like to know whether that is clear because most of the time they don't, and we don't worry about it. But if they did somehow, I think then we'd be having to take that into account as well. So my preference is better data and then be able to make a decision.
Okay.
I wonder, Mr. Chairman, if I mean, this I, you know, inspectional services is always very helpful, and I wonder if the applicant could just work with Mr. Valorelli to get this clear and make sure that they're following the rules and do the calculation. I'm guessing actually it's going to turn out to be okay. But if it isn't, Mr. Valorelli could help them with 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 what to do about that. And if we took, I mean, we're meeting practically every week between now and so, you know, if if you could take a little bit of time, get it right with the help of of inspectional services department, and then come back and we can give a clear approval with that won't have any problems in the future, the applicant might be better off with that.
Mr. Valorelli, would you have an opportunity between now and the 25th of May to assist the applicant with that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, absolutely.
Mr. Revellack?
Yeah, I mean, going back to usable, going back to open space, I mean, the the amount provided on the worksheet, I don't think could possibly be right. I, looking at the plot plan, the surveyor's plan. I mean, the question of whether this lot has usable open space really depends on the dimension between the rear, the distance between the rear of the two story porch and the rear lot line. And I, you know, that's that's kind of a critical piece that we need to know to, you know, to make a determination that there is in fact no usable open space. So I would, I would like to see that clarified for myself.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, one of the things that I think won't necessarily be clear to everybody watching, that watching is that actually, it's probably a good thing for the applicant not to have usable open space now because we followed a rule generally that if you have nothing now and you have nothing afterwards, then you haven't made anything worse. And so consequently, we don't care very much about that unless there's something else egregious with the application, which there isn't here. Whereas if you actually had open space and was and were reducing the amount of open space you had, which again, I'm not sure would be happening here anyway, but the but the ratio would be changing because of the increased gross floor area that actually poses a problem. So paradoxically, it might be better from the applicant's point of view, actually not to have any usable open space now than to have some and have the ratio nominally go off the other way. So when Mr. Revellack is making that point, it's really a point of helping the applicant if that if that calculation turns out to be wrong.
So just for McGovern's to, I think essentially what we'd be looking to do is to request some additional information. You would need to work with the designer to that they would need to make a calculation on the attic floor of the usable of the actual space that is seven feet in elevation or greater. And if they have a question about how to calculate that, Mr. Valorelli can help them make that calculation. And all we would need is just, you know, a single page sheet where they draw out that area and identify it with the with the amount of floor space that that takes up. And that's all we would need for that for the that calculation. And then the other thing we would need is in the rear is just as Mr. Revellack noted, in the rear yard, we would need the dimension between the garage and the sideline opposite and between the porch and the edge of the rear and the rear line.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Is the attic space seven feet or greater? Is that what's existing now? Or is that what exists with the with the dormer?
That would be proposed.
The proposed, okay.
Yeah, with the with the with the dorm.
Dormer.
Yeah.
Okay. And that that footprint, so to speak, should be 50% of the floor. Okay. And that footprint, so to speak, should be 50% of the floor below?
That's correct.
Or less.
Or less.
Or less, or less. Okay. Yeah, I like to follow the rules, and I'd rather.
Does that include, like, closet space and everything?
So it's everything that the height is seven feet from the finished floor to the underside of the roof structure. So if it's, if there's like a hung ceiling, that doesn't count, it comes to the structure.
Okay.
And so the designer should be able to figure out, you know, just sort of lay it out on his computer and give you a number.
Okay.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Chairman, if I may for a second?
Mr. Valarelli?
Yeah, Mr. McGovern, I can help you with that. If you can just email me to the ZPA website, I can step you through it. We can get this solved pretty quick.
Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, that was something I was, I honestly, I take that responsibility. I was a little confused as to how to calculate that, whether it was the pre or whether it was the post, and
Well, how much to include, because I actually sat down my brother, who's a builder, and I said, Pat, I can't figure any of this stuff out. I was on the website. That zoning board stuff is like, I don't know, a hundred pages long. Anywho, so I'm going to give my brother really bad grief, because he said include all the space that's on there on your lot that's not being used. They're going to want, you know, have to help with your ratio. And I'm like, well, apparently not. Trust me, we don't have a whole lot of space on there that is a yard, if that's what you're referring to. We have a big driveway, but
I can help you.
Little backyard, little backyard.
I can help you with that fairly quickly without taking the board's time tonight. We can do that right away tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Before we move on, I would like to ask if there's any public comment in relation to to this application, if there's any other questions or concerns from the general public. Any members of public wish to speak to this item, should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participants tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, you can dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You'll be called upon by the chair. You'll be asked to give your name and address. You'll be given time for questions and comments. Are there any questions and comments from the public in regards to this application for 34 Marathon Street? Ms. Weber?
Yes, I'm at 14 Ryder Street in Arlington. I'm just, I wanted to ask Mr. Hanlon about the usable space. So I feel like those that don't have usable space could build a skyscraper, and those that do have usable space are are penalized by that. And I want to kind of think, not regarding this property at hand, but just the rule in general, I just don't understand it.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead. No, that's, well, you can do it better than I can.
I'm not sure.
I can take a stab at it.
Okay, Mr. Revellak.
So there are two types of open space in our bylaw. One is called usable, and it's, you know, primarily for the purpose of, you know, of having things like tennis courts and swimming pools and outdoor service activities like laundry and gardening and that sort of thing. So the, now, usable open space has to meet a set of conditions. It's got to be flat, and it has to have a minimum horizontal dimension of 25 feet. And now typically, in a residential zone, 30, a property owner would need usable open space that's equal to like 30% of whatever their gross floor area is. So as you add on to the building, the requirement for usable open space increases. Now, where the non-conforming aspect of this comes into play is if a property doesn't have anything, you know, that's 25 feet in diameter, that's free of automotive and vehicular traffic and suitably flat, then, you know, the percentage of usable open space is zero. If, for a non-conforming parcel, general, you know, the way we've, the way we treat it by precedent is if you start with 0% usable open space, and you end up with 0% usable open space, you have not increased the degree of non-conformity. Now, does this provide an advantage to someone with who has no usable open space? And yes, it does. But you have to realize that the places where, you know, the parcels that, you know, are in that condition are generally small, and you generally, you know, have less room to build. There are also a number of other regulations, like height, you know, for example. So you can't, you know, lack of usable open space might allow you to put on a dormer, but it's not going to let you build a skyscraper. Does that sort of answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Revellak, and thank you, Mr. Revellak, for the question. Any further questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment for this particular hearing. So I think the recommendation from the board is that we ask to continue this hearing to a date certain. I would recommend that we give the applicant two weeks, which should be sufficient time to work with Mr. Valarelli and with their with their design professionals to come up with the responses to the questions that we have. And I would propose that they be added to the agenda for Tuesday, May 25, which is the hearing that's scheduled to start at 7:30 PM. We have one residential item on that. And so this would be an easy one to add to that date. Is there any further question from the board? Or the applicant?
Thank you. I appreciate all the consideration.
Quite welcome. So with that, may I have a motion to continue?
Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
I move that we continue this hearing to a date certain of May 25th at 7:30.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. So vote of the board, Mr. Dupont?
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Revellak?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we are continued on 34 Marathon Street until Tuesday, May 25. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. With that, that brings us to item seven on our agenda this evening, which is docket 365653 Pine Ridge Road. While I'm uploading documents here in the background, if I could ask the applicant to identify himself and tell us what they would like to do.
David Whitney, thank you, members of the board, for having us tonight. I'm an architect here in town, working with Shahrazad and David Poter. They currently live in a smaller house in Arlington, but have bought this house on Pine Ridge, and we seek to expand it and improve it and update it to serve as a house for growing family long into the future. We're proposing a big addition, but everything we're doing is by right. We're complying with all the zoning bylaws. We're here solely because of the size of the addition. We propose to eliminate an existing freestanding garage that is non-conforming, is far too close to the property line. We'll replace it with an attached garage with finished space above. I hope the drawings are clear. We're doing a lot of work on the house. It could be argued that we should tear it down and replace it instead. But it's a charming house with a lot of great details and features, and we're trying to be respectful of that and make it a bigger, better version of itself. We're matching those materials. We're matching those details. We're trying to stay true to the spirit of the house that's there.
Quickly bring up the drawings to show everyone. Mr. Whitney, I know if you want to just walk us quickly through the
Sure, I can talk briefly, if you can. There's the existing site plan. You see the existing garage that's being highlighted on the right-hand side of the page. The house is on a corner. It really addresses both Hawthorne Avenue and Pine Ridge. If you could press on, please. There's the existing basement. And the next is the existing first-floor plan. The shaded walls are existing walls that will remain. The rest will get revised and replaced. We don't change the shape of the house drastically. We don't change the footprint of the existing house drastically, but we're making a lot of changes, rearranging the interior of the house. There is a unfinished space on the attic floor. It will be far less than 50% of the footprint of the house. Here's the new site plan showing the proposed addition. The existing non-conforming garage goes away. You see the big black circle at the bottom. That's a pretty great tree that we want to maintain. And so the driveway will curve around it. Here's the new basement plan, the new two-car garage attached to the house, and you'll enter through to a mudroom and to a new flight of stairs that brings you up into the house. There are existing stairs at the front door that project far, far into the yard, halfway to the street, and kind of disrupt the front yard. We're replacing them. The front door stays pretty much where it is, but reconfiguring the stairs so they'll fit tighter against the house, as you see where the cursor is now. We're going to use the same stones on the new stairs as is in the existing foundation on the house. New second floor, rearranged bedrooms. And the existing room on the third floor stays mostly as it is, except that the stairs themselves are moving, so it can get reconfigured a bit, but still far less than 50%. This is the new proposed elevation facing Pine Ridge. You see the gambrel shape of the existing roof stays as is, although it it gets expanded over a larger footprint of the existing house. And then that shape is matched in the addition, only rotated 90 degrees out over the new space on the right-hand side of the screen. This is the view from Hawthorne. The proposed addition from this view will lie completely behind the existing house. You won't see it at all. The back of the house, there'll be a small terrace with doors leading out to it. Again, you see that's the existing gambrel shape on the right-hand side of the building. And then on the next page, you can see how we're mirroring or matching that shape with the addition, so it'll look like a wing of the original house. And again, the materials will match the shingles and the clavage and the details and the eaves, et cetera.
To share on that. Thank you very much, Mr. Whitney. Other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Revellak?
Just a brief question, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding the property okay. I took a bike ride over this weekend, and the chain link, there's a chain link fence that runs between the house and the garage, and I just want to confirm that that is not the property line.
It's confusing, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
That this garage doesn't belong to my clients, but it does. That is their garage. The chain link fence will be coming down.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Mr. Mills?
Yes, can I see an existing front elevation of the house, please?
If I specifically have
I believe there are photographs of it in the planning department's report, Mr. Klein.
Ah, thank you. Ah, yes, here we go.
Thank you.
If I may speak briefly, from the top photograph, you see there's sort of two gambrel shapes, a larger one and a smaller one. And there's an exposed, there's an open deck there. It's got a full stone foundation and then a railing. What I'm proposing to do is to expand the larger gap, pull it closer to the camera, so it subsumes that smaller gap. The house will still sit on that stone foundation. That was outdoor porch now will be indoor space.
And this is the porch that you had, and steps that you had referenced that you were going to be changing the direction on to make them shorter?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, excuse me, Mr. Chair. So we're saying that smaller gambrel is going to be extended to the left and become complete, if you will?
So I believe there'll be a separate gambrel addition, or an L, that's going to come off of, looking at the lower image, off of this side here.
Yes, I've got that. But I'm just saying the front elevation is not going to change substantially beyond the porch.
Right. I think, believe what he's saying is that this shape here will go away, and it will, that this shape here will be essentially extruded forward to this lane.
Okay, so the front facade will be one. It won't be two planes. It'll be one plane.
Mr. Whitney?
Yes, the Pine Ridge facade, where you see now two sort of nested gambrel shapes, there'll be one large gambrel.
Yeah, thank you. That was my confusion. I'd like to say the architecture looks very nice. You did a nice job.
Thank you very much.
So the question that I have is in regards to this tree here, which is a second large tree on the lot. Which, let me find the site plan.
I can say unfortunately, that one will need to go, and I honestly don't recall whether it's in the footprint of the addition or so close that it would clearly be endangered by it.
That's this one here, this 28-inch tree?
Yes, there it is.
Okay. So this one here, the 45-inch, is the one that you said would be maintained by having the driveway shifted to go away from it. But this one here would be removed. Wanted to clarify that.
Frankly, its canopy is so big that if we were to try and respect the canopy, we wouldn't be able to do anything at all.
Are there further questions or comments from the board? I am seeing none. So I'll now open the meeting for public comment. Public questions and comments will be taken as they relate to the matter at hand, should be directed to the board for the purposes of informing the decision. Members of public, granted time to ask questions and make comments. The chair asks those wishing to address the board a second time during any particular hearing to please be patient, allow those wishing to speak for the first time to go ahead of them. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participants tab of the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial star nine to indicate you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the meeting host. You'll be asked to give your name and address, and you'll be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair. Please remember to speak clearly. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed, the public comment period will be closed. The board and staff will do our best to show documents being discussed. So with that, Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Steve Moore, Piedmont Street, and I'm a member of the Arlington Treaty Committee. Question about the big tree in front. It looks, I applaud the owner's desire to maintain the large tree. Large trees in Arlington are unfortunately a disappearing species as time's going by. And however, I believe since it's on the plot line, it's a protected tree anyway, is a street tree. So it both behooves the owner and the town to maintain that tree. Question about the tree behind the house that, Mr. Chairman, you pointed out was pretty close to the addition, and I think the developer said was going to be taken. It's, it looks also like it's very close to the setback. Have you engaged with the tree warden about this project?
Mr. Whitney?
No, we haven't. We will, you know, as that's one of the steps any project will have to go through for approval, but we haven't yet.
Excellent. I thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the developer for pursuing that because we're finding increasingly it's important to engage early on before any destruction happens to other trees or the trees that aren't going to be taken or appropriately protected during construction. And the tree warden also can help with suggestions about how to handle various issues that often come up during that inspection. So there are some magnificent trees on this property. So there are some magnificent trees on this property and we sure appreciate care being taken around them. So thank you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Are there other questions or comments? Yes, you're bouncing around here for one second, okay. Ms. Furman and Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Juliette Furman and Stan Wolf from 52 Grandview Road. So we're county cornered to the property. And I was wondering with the plans for the garage, whether there'll be considerable blasting and whether it would in any way affect the foundations, for instance, of neighboring structures.
Mr. Whitney, are you aware whether there's, whether the excavation is anticipated to be in any ledge?
Oh, we suspect there may be ledge in the, in the vicinity. The truth is, we just don't know and we never really know until we excavate. If we, when we excavate, if we encounter ledge, the first step is always to try and break it out without blasting, with hammering and, and steps like that. I think it's very unlikely that blasting would be required. If it is, you know, all the requisite protective steps would be taken.
Just a quick question for Mr. Valorelli. Are there specific requirements and notifications to the abutting neighbors should rock removal be required?
Yes, so that's done through the fire department. But looking at the plans, Mr. Whitney, that, that the first floor of this project's a garage that's underneath. So I don't know how far you go down, it doesn't seem to me that it will be too bad. But, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, yes, and that blasting permit is issued by the fire department.
If, if the, if blasting is not required and the, the owner wishes to proceed with chipping, is there a notification that's required to the public in that regard?
Not specifically for chipping, however, they do have the, the good neighbor agreement will take effect with this one. And also the construction control measures. But the good neighbor agreement, so everybody within a 300-foot radius will know that this project is starting and they will have a contact person if they have any issues with it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Furman?
Thank you.
Okay. You're very welcome. Next up, Mr. Schaller?
Thank you, Chair. My name is Terry Schaller, I'm the owner of the property directly next door at 49 Pine Ridge Road. It's my property line that that existing garage sits virtually on top of. And I, I have a number of concerns about the project here. Some of them I think are probably not appropriate for the, or within the remit of the zoning board. But I do have considerable problems worried about the construction project itself, when it begins, how long it's going to last. I imagine this can be quite disruptive to the neighborhood in general and to my backyard in particular. So I just want to get that out on the table as a concern that I have. I also know that other nearby neighbors have raised concerns about construction, the traffic for construction, the busy intersection that's out here without traffic control and so on. So there's a series of questions that are sort of all wrapped together there in one. And my neighbor across the street, Mark Demery, I see has his hand up as well. And I believe he has written a letter, which I saw on the website earlier about concerns about construction. So I, there's not a particular question buried in there, just a series of concerns about the effect particularly of the construction period itself. And mitigation of, I, I worry, for example, that landscaping in our yard that is directly against the existing garage is almost certainly to be damaged. I worry about a retaining wall in our yard that's only about three feet, four feet maybe from that existing garage wall. So I just, I just hope that there is some way that we can come to an agreement about mitigation of the effects.
Thank you, Mr. Schaller, just a question for myself. I believe Hawthorne Street is a private way, is that correct?
Yes, Hawthorne and Pine Ridge is also a private.
Pine Ridge is also. Thank you, other, further questions? Mr. Schaller?
That'll do it for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Demery?
Thank you. So.
Sorry, if I can just name and address to the record, sorry.
Name is Mark Demery, 52 Pine Ridge Road. As was discussed earlier, we, I put together a letter just to, to hopefully minimize my time, our time on this, on, on the call. But basically, I do have a lot of concerns with regard to the actual construction process. As these are private roads with essentially, you know, not shoulders, no sidewalks in a lot of areas. And we're also at a pinch point here where this is the access for a lot of the neighborhood, not just our street, but all the streets to the north of us and, and to the east of Hawthorne. The access Robbins Farm and the access Brackett School as well. So we have a lot of, a lot of people that walk through this corner in order to get access to, to that public area. The sightlines are not great. And again, it's a private road. We struggle on, certainly on Pine Ridge Road with, you know, even small projects because of the width of the road. Again, we don't have shoulders, we have some sidewalks here and there, a little hodgepodge, if you will, the sidewalks. So when we get a project of this size, I start scaling up the number of vehicles. Especially with the number of trades that are going to be involved. And especially in the mornings when we have kids walking to school and they're walking down Hawthorne, they're walking up Pine Ridge to this pinch point. And we have a lot of, you know, very busy contractors trying to get their day started. I wanted to have a better understanding as to what the town is requiring or what the owners may even have in place for construction controls and for traffic controls for a project this size. I mean, this isn't just putting a new deck on, this is 58% of me, I, I forget what the square footage is, but this is going to be probably the biggest home in this area by a long shot.
Thank you, Mr. Valorelli. What, what does the inspection services require from the applicant in regards to sort of details of the, the construction plan that would be included in the good neighbor agreement, but that would also sort of explain how they're intending to to manage traffic and other aspects of the, the construction process?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Chairman. So the, also the construction control agreement would also be into play here because it's a large addition. And I don't have that document in front of me, but that covers such issues as the start time and the end time for tradespeople. And a whole host of issues that was approved by town meeting, I want to say two years ago, that addresses the concerns that Mr. Demery just put to the, put forth to the board.
Does that document allow for any adjustments for specific neighborhood differences? Or is it a, a specific document that covers all of our?
It's a specific document that, that is the responsibility of the contractor to uphold. And I, I think it covers most of Mr. Demery's concerns.
And is it within the purview of the zoning board of appeals to make conditions that would impact the construction process or is that outside our purview?
Well, it's, it's part of the process. I mean, you can add it as a condition, but it's a standard procedure that a project of this size the good neighbor agreement and the construction control agreement are both in play.
I haven't been able to figure out how to raise my hand, I'm John Morrison, 56 Pine Ridge Road. Could you tell us where we? I'm sorry?
Please proceed.
John Morrison, 56 Pine Ridge Road. Can you tell us where we can find copies of the good neighbor agreement and the construction agreement so that we have them and understand what they are?
So I, so this, Valorelli, are they posted at the moment? I know that as a part of the, the notification process, if should this project go forward, those would be provided to abutters and abutters to abutters within 300 feet of the project. But are those documents available for purview now on the inspection services website?
They, I believe there, they can be found on the town laws, not the town zoning bylaws, but the town laws. I can make it a little easier for you, Mr. Morrison, if you, if you can send the ZBA an email with your request, I can, I can forward those documents to you.
Do we have, do I have your email?
Yeah, so you'll find that on the.
It's the zba@arlingtonma.gov.
I'd like to, just on this, on the legal notice, the ZBA website isn't W, is, it says www.arlington.gov/cba. It's actually Arlington, Mass. If you just type in Arlington, you get nowhere, you gotta, can't go there, no.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that so we can make that connection?
Says W, at the bottom, it says the ZBA website is www.arlington.gov/cba. It's actually Arlington MA.gov/cba.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, so then where I'm on here, where would I find your email, sir?
It should be at the bottom of that legal notice.
Please direct my question to zba@town.arlington.mass.us?
Dot MA.us.
Okay.
Is that correct, is that what you're seeing?
I have zba@zba@town.arlingtonMA.us.
That's correct.
Okay, so we can send you questions to that email address, yes?
Yes, please.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valorelli, just one more question about the, the good neighbor agreement. Does it require a posting of a copy of the notice at the job site?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And one last question, my wife wants to know what's the approximate construction schedule? Will we be bringing this into the winter or, or how long do you think it'll take if you were to get an approval tomorrow?
Mr. Whitney, do you have a sense of that?
It would be several months before it begins. I've got a lot more drawing to do and then we have to bid and you may be aware that the construction market is crazy busy right now. It, it could be late this year or next year before construction begins.
And do you have a sense as to what the period of construction might be?
I suspect the overall duration will probably be six to eight months, once it begins. But the, the latter half of that will be fairly tame for the neighborhood. Once, once it's framed and the shell is done. After that, the work will be inside and much quieter and much more contained.
If you have a lot more drawings to do, does that mean that there will be another ZBA appearance?
Uh, no.
The drawings have to do with details that don't, don't affect the ZBA, things, things like electrical plans and picking out doorknobs.
Yeah, so the additional, the additional work on the drawings is, is more details and interiors. It does not affect the, the exterior portion of the building. And one of the standard conditions that the board imposes upon its decisions is that the the documents that we receive will be the documents that the, the owner is required to follow through with and any changes, any exterior changes have to be approved in writing by the board.
The, the elevation doesn't show any windows in the new extension on the top floor. Is that final, that there will be no windows in there and there will no, not enough headroom to be livable space?
Yes, there is no space on the third floor in the addition.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
One of the advantages of having a hearing where several people from the neighborhood come to speak is that it kind of breaks the ice. There's lots of rules and regulations and notices and so forth that have to be given, but possibly the most important thing is this is an opportunity for the applicant and the applicant's architect to hear the concerns. And I would hope that, that the process is going to just be a matter of exchanging documents or looking up bylaws that a conversation can ensue that, that will help, you know, resolve certain concerns and, and a line of conversation and sort of a friendly intercourse coming is solving a common problem is often a lot better than having this or that rule that does or doesn't favor you. So I'm, I'm kind of hoping that afterwards the applicant and the abutters share email addresses themselves and, and open up some communication so that when somebody has a concern, instead of stewing about it, there's a conversation and maybe it can get fixed by people just working things out.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Mr. Whitney?
Mr. Hanlon, thank you for that, for that observation. I guess I'd like to assure the, the abutting neighbors that great steps will be taken to meet their concerns and to make the process as smooth as possible from their opinion. Please don't be thrown off if months pass before you hear from us again, because as I said, there's a lot of drawing to do and bidding and permitting and it may be many months before it begins. But when it does, the builder will reach out to all of you, will be available to all of you. And we'll do everything we can to be as sensitive as possible. By every right, we could tear the house down and start, start again and we wouldn't even need to be here. I hope the fact that we're trying to maintain as much as we can and be respectful of it is an indication of the respect that we've got for this town we all live in.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Mr. Sonneler?
Hi, this is Pranesh Sonneler, I live on 32 Hawthorne Ave. So I'm sort of right, sort of right behind this property at 53 Pine Ridge. And I just wanted to say that I, I think the design looks really good, you know, because we'll be looking at it you know, for as long as we live here, so really pleased with how, how the design has come up. And I understand that there will be some pain, especially during the construction and, you know, but that's something that we have faith in, you know, spoken to the, the owners of the property and we've faith that they will ensure that it will be done properly. So just want to say it's a great design, we really like it. And they have a full support. I do agree that there will be traffic issues, just on my, my thoughts is that the more cars that are passing the street to slow the traffic, so it might actually be safer walking with the construction, but that's, that's that's not the point, but great design. And we're confident that this will be done in a way that will be good for the neighborhood, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from the general public? Mr. Tackets? For your pardon if I got that wrong? You're on mute though still, sir.
Thank you, Andy Tackets. I live at 48 Pine Ridge Road, my wife Antonella's here. Yeah, I've chatted with a bunch of folks and I, you know, I'm glad we surfaced all these things. And want to welcome the new neighbors whenever you get here. And I want to thank you for, on behalf of all of us, for removing the chain link fence. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Demery?
Yeah, just a, a couple of clarifications and I will support Andy's previous comment that we have bemoaned for many a year is, thank you for moving the chain link fence. But going back to the other issue, I'm still a little unsure as to who, where from the town and who from the town is responsible for, for traffic control. I understand that the, the general contractor will probably be made responsible for this issue through their, their, their contract and their, and that type of stuff. But who from the town and, and, and what is the, the process as far as traffic goes for these? And I, again, apologize, we, we have not had this issue before on this street or and I had to deal with this before, so I don't even know if the zoning board is the appropriate. So I don't even know if the zoning board is the appropriate uh, uh, commission, but uh, uh, it, again, the, the, the traffic concerns I have I think are very, very real.
Are your, are your concerns more in terms of parking or sort of logistics of moving large things in and out of the neighborhood or just the, the sheer increase in traffic volume? Or all of the above?
It, it, it's really all of the above. Again, when we start parking cars, um, it's such a narrow street that um, it certainly does limit the access. Uh, it does limit emergency vehicle access. Occasionally, uh, you know, because we're kind of, we're, we're not a main road, we don't see a lot of people come up, but there's a, a lot of times if people park on both sides of the road, there's no way you're getting any emergency vehicles up and down. Uh, just this morning alone, and we had one person who was having some junk removed and I think we had another one that had a painter. Uh, the, the road is blocked for five or 10 minutes. Again, when it's something like that, not a big deal. You wait, okay, it'll be done eventually. I'm just concerned with all the trades we're gonna have coming through here. Uh, and, and I know that the architect mentioned that, you know, once it's, it's framed, it'll, it'll seem a lot, well, maybe less noisy, but we're still, as a matter of fact, we'll probably have more trades, more vehicles, once it's framed. Um, and we're gonna have them at times when people are walking and kids are walking on the street, so. Um, it, again, I, I'm just very concerned about the safety issue. Um, I know the general contractor may be put in charge of that, but every once in a while, even if he's really good, you know, we, we want to be able to have somebody that we can go to and say, yeah, you know, we got a couple of contractors, we're kind of doing their own thing here. Can you kind of take them under your wing and show them how it's supposed to be done? Um, again, having that working conversation, whether it be with somebody from the town, whether it be with the general contractor, um, it probably won't be with the owners themselves, because, you know, that's not what they do. Um, but I would, it would be good, I think, for us to have, to know what that process is, so that we can work within it.
And Mr. Valarelli, is there a specific person in the, in town who sort of addresses these questions of of traffic concerns in regards to construction projects?
So, uh, the, the short answer is the police department, but it's, there, there is no uh law that says a contractor cannot park on the street and uh do his work on the project. Uh, the board can impose a condition if they want to, that the contractors can park on the property. I'm looking at a front yard here of almost 50 feet in depth with a uh slope of less than 8%. So uh, certainly if it's a condition, now it's enforceable by inspectional services. Other than that, the only requirement for a police detail is gonna be if they have to blast.
Okay. Um, obviously with, with all the private ways, the contractor would be limited to parking on this property. They would not be allowed to park on the opposite side of, of either street or farther down the block in any direction. So, you know, if, if there's the availability of extra parking on the site, that would probably be helpful. Um, and where the driveway is being, the driveway garage are being relocated, um, it might be possible, once the existing garage has been taken down, to utilize that, that slab and the driveway leading to it, uh, to move some construction vehicles farther under the site and possibly then the new driveway can be utilized as well to try to move vehicles off of the, off of the street and away from uh the property lines. Mr. Shower, for a second time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted to, to voice, I, when I started off of here, I may have seemed panicked and, and and disconcerted. Uh, and I probably was a little bit. Um, I welcome very much Mr. Whitney's uh suggestion that we begin to uh have a real dialogue, either with him or with the owners, uh, or both. Just looking forward to, you know, how this is going to all come together, uh, so that we have an opportunity outside. Uh, you know, taking up the time of the ZBA, um, to have conversations that, as Mr. Hanlon, I believe, said earlier, might very well be better and more appropriately uh handled, um, just sort of person to person or in a group meeting or something like that. But uh, I do welcome our new neighbors and like everyone else, look very much forward to having that chain link fence disappear.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments from the public at this time? Looking around, I see no raised. Nope, Ms. Weber?
Yeah, I'd just like to, um.
Sorry, name and address to the record.
Oh, sorry, Ryder Street, um, 14 Ryder Street. I would just like to make a comment about the old grow, with the older trees in Arlington. Climate change is happening and we need to save as many of the old trees as we can, so I just wanna put that as a town um need to put that more central.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Anybody further? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment uh for this hearing. Um, so going back to the boards, we have um a lot of comment and a lot of not entirely sure how to wrap all of this into um the decision in a usable way. It certainly seems like we should condition on the removal of the chain link fence. That seems to be a fairly constant, fairly constant um, request from the neighbors and fairly easy to follow through on. Um. It, it, it sounds like there are, um, in regards to the new construction, um, the actual physical built, building that the, the application seems very reasonable. And should be fairly easily um accommodated in the, in the neighborhood. It, it's unfortunate about the, the 28 inch caliber tree um that will need to be removed, but that is not within our purview. That's gonna have to go through the um, the town's tree warden for uh discussion and approval. There is, there was some um discussion from the abutting neighbor about some concern in regards to the demolition of the existing garage and the, the possible impact um on existing landscaping and structures on the neighboring property. Um, and hopefully that is something that um the contractor can uh, can work out with that abutting neighbor when they're working um at the property lawn. And then in addition to all those, really, it seems like most of the concerns are in regards to how the construction will be carried out um, and the impacts that will have on the neighborhood. Um, as Mr. Whitney said, that, you know, that won't be happening immediately. That's something that will uh probably not be happening for at least four to six months. Um, should this, uh, should the ZBA give approval to this project? And then um, can, that would then continue for, uh, as he said, six to eight months beyond that. Time period would be the accurate period of construction. So there's, there's a lot of time um on the front end still to, uh, you know, for some of these things to be ironed out. Um, I think my question for the board specifically is, are there conditions? Um, so we have our three standard conditions, which we have read earlier this evening. Um, but are there additional conditions that the board feels would be appropriate to add to um a possible approval that would address some of the concerns that were, have been raised uh by the neighbors?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dupont?
So I wasn't entirely clear uh what the specifics were regarding the concerns that the immediate abutting neighbor on Pine Ridge had. But I do wonder if it's appropriate to add something or if we can, just stating that the applicant will um, meet with the abutter to determine what if any um, steps ought to be taken to protect, um, you know, the abutters land? Cause it sounded like that was one of the concerns that was raised. So if I have that right, and so if that's appropriate, that might be one thing. And then the other item is, um, as you were speaking with Mr. Valarelli about being able to actually permit parking on the property itself during the course of the construction. And I'm just wondering if the other members of the board feel that it would be appropriate to put in language saying that the contractors would park on the property uh whenever possible. I realize it's kind of vague, but you know, there may be situations where they can't. And uh, but I do think that it's something that's worth considering.
Actually, along those lines, um, uh, Mr. Moore, if you're still on the call, um, I would be curious your capacity uh with the tree committee, what, are there dangers to the other existing trees on the site? If we were to allow parking in the lawn during the construction period?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, excellent point. Um, you have to maintain tree protection measures for the critical root zone of the trees. Uh, it is roughly uh a foot one inch of, of DBA, which is uh diameter breast height. Uh, has to equate to uh one foot radius, uh, one inch DBA for one foot radius. Uh, so in other words, a circle that would be two feet wide around the trunk of a tree, centered on the tree trunk itself, times whatever the inches are. So if it's a 46 inch tree, the root zone is huge.
Yeah.
It's what, 46 feet times two? That's a lot of, that's a lot of, uh, that's half a lot. So you're right, it's a good point that the tree um could easily be damaged, cause the, the, it is so large in the front yard there.
Okay.
Um, now, that being said, uh, if that chain link fence that you're all talking about, I think surrounds the edge of the property, if they were to bring traffic in via uh, is it Hawthorne instead of Pine Ridge?
Mm-hmm.
Might work.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thanks for that, Mr. Chairman. That's, that's a very important thing that often is overlooked. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So, so Mr. Dupont, then to your, to your point, we could um include a condition that would allow parking on the property. If we could in, indicate, um, you know, outside of a root protection zone consisting of, you know, one foot for one inch of uh DBA. Diameter breast height, yeah, DBH.
H, I, I, I messed that up all.
I knew caliber wasn't quite the right term, but.
So could that be then in, you know, uh, within, with consultation uh with the tree warden?
I think that would be, that would be a good way of putting it, yeah.
Rather than having to actually set down the specific way of measuring?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that, uh, Mr. Hanlon's completely appropriate. Yes, he has all, and he'll recommend how to do the protection as well.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so, so then to Mr. Dupont, so then the two conditions you would want, one would be that the applicant is to meet with the abutting neighbor uh, to discuss protecting existing property.
Yes.
And then the second would be um, the, the board would allow parking on the property um, in consultation with the, during the, during the period of construction. In consultation with the tree warden.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hanlon.
I, I wonder if, I, I actually kind of liked a little bit the, the flexible language. Uh, if you don't like it, it's, it's Weasley language uh that we initially uh started with. We, we haven't really had, I mean, the, the chairman has pointed out one potential problem. I don't really know what other problems there may be there, and I don't want to sort of over prescribe. Uh, it may turn out that, that there are things that we can't foresee here, cause nobody has really examined this with any detail that should suggest different solutions or make it undesirable to bring, to do things. I, I would really like to weigh in in terms of encouraging this. Uh, and in general, discouraging having an adverse effect or having an unnecessary adverse effect on the, on the streets. But I don't want to be more prescriptive than we know how to do, given the paucity of information we have on the record before us tonight.
Okay. So with, with, which language would you want to change?
I would, I would say to the, to the extent feasible, or, I mean, we, there, in, initially when Mr. Dupont suggested something, there was a qualifier to the extent feasible or something like that, and, and that sort of is what, what I have in mind and, and maybe use the word encourage. I just, I, you know, I want to sort of point things in the right direction without necessarily saying exactly what has to happen, cause we don't know enough to, to do that.
Okay. So you would want us to encourage the applicant to meet with the abutting neighbor to discuss protecting existing property to the greatest extent?
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm talking about the, I'm sorry. I, I'm talking about the parking.
Oh.
With, uh, as to the abutting neighbor, I mean, I think there's an obligation on the part of the landowner to avoid just hurting the property of the, and the idea is simply to make sure that, that actually, that conversation happens and there's adequate planning to do that. It, it's really bringing people, bringing construction stuff onto the property and how you solve that problem. I, I just don't think that bringing, we don't know enough to know that bringing as much as possible on the property is, is uh the panacea there and wouldn't have unintended consequences that would be worse than having. So I, there's where I would like to see encouraged and to the extent feasible.
Alright. Instead of allow parking, to encourage parking on the property during the period of construction in consultation with it, to the greatest extent possible in consultation with the tree warden. Okay. Got it. Um, in regards to the, um, I've seen that the documents that will need to be sent out, that Mr. Valo really noted, both the, um, the Good Neighbor Agreement, um, but also the, uh, the construction notice, the Construction Control Agreement. So those, Mr. Valerally, those are both things that are, are those sent by the applicant or those sent by the town to the abutting neighbors?
No, those are sent by the applicant, Mr. Chairman, and they, they send it by certified mail.
Okay. So I, so I think in this case, it would make sense for us to, although it is already a requirement of the building permit, I think unless there's objection from the board, I think it would be appropriate to include it as a condition um, that those that those documents be included uh or be provided by the applicant per the bylaw. Or I guess comply with requirements. Good Neighbor Agreement. And provide construction. Construction Control Agreement. As required by town bylaws. Um, and I would also want to include um encourage applicant to discuss. No, Mr. Hanlon, would be good wording for uh, what we would want the applicant to discuss with the neighbors. The construction procedures. Construction related procedures.
I think that, I think that would be all right. I, you know, one of the things, when we actually have a written opinion, we can work on the precise words, wordsmithing. I think it's important now for us to have made a decision on what we want in substance, and then we can try to figure out a good way of of saying it. I mean, ultimately, we're looking at the whole complex of things that happens in construction and that helps remove conflict to the to the extent possible in the process of 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 building this addition.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would have, I would have said, construction schedule, process and procedures. But as Mr. Hanlon says stated, we can, we have room to fine tune this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Revolak. So then the are there any further conditions that the board would like to discuss at this time? Being none, so then the conditions that we have for us. So the first of the three standard conditions, number one, the final plans and specifications approved by the board for the permit shall be the final plans and specifications submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. Should be no deviation during construction from proof plans and specifications without the express written approval of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. Condition two, the building inspector is hereby notified that he is to monitor the site and should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time he determines that violations are present. And the inspector of buildings shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning bylaw and under the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty-one D. An institute non criminal complaints, if necessary, the inspector of buildings may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action, also in accordance with section three point one. And condition three, the board should maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to this special permit grant. Then condition number four will be that the applicant is to meet with the abutting neighbors to discuss protection of existing property. Number five would be to the board encourages parking encourages allowing parking on the property during the construction period in consultation with the tree warden to the excuse me, the board encourages allowing parking on the property during the construction period to the greatest extent possible in consultation with the tree ward. That's it. And then number six was that the the applicant should comply with the requirements of the Good Neighbor Agreement and provide instruction control, provide a copy of construction control agreement as required by town bylaws. And number seven would be that the board encourages the applicant to discuss construction, schedule processes and procedures with the neighbors prior to the commencement of any construction activities.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would probably say prior to and during, I mean, do we?
Yeah. Prior to commencement and during. Okay. So we have seven conditions and we have the application for us. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
I just wonder whether, I mean, we've, we've now sort of it's always said that it's not a good idea to see sausages or laws being made. And we've, we were doing a certain amount of seeing laws being made now. And I just would like, Mr. to give Mr. Whitney an opportunity to understanding that we haven't necessarily coming up, come up with precise wording and everything. But if if there's any place where he sees us seriously going astray that we may want to rethink, I'd like to give him a chance to bring that to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Mr. Whitney?
Mr. Hanlon, thank you very much. I'll I'll say that everything that's been for discussion here seems utterly reasonable to me. It does strike me, though, that a lot of these conditions are compelling us to comply with laws and rules that we already have to comply with. For example, we've got to comply with parking rules about where we can park, about how we block streets and things like that. We've got to use the conform with the Good Neighbor Agreement. We've got to put in the construction controls. We're also going to comply with with employee employee regulations. We're also going to comply with this, you know, the the building code. You know, I I wonder do we need the conditions that, that just reiterate rules we have to play by anyway?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just sort of comment, I, it seems to me that it's true that in some of these situations where it's really a matter of making it clear in the document so that everybody who sees the document will know that we've sort of singled out a particular thing. I I do believe that going forward and thinking about how we deal with the situation, sometimes not having conditions, but just stating things as part of our findings may be suitable. But we haven't got experience with doing that yet. But obviously, we haven't really discussed at this hearing, the employment practices and the workers' compensation and all of that. If somebody wanted to raise it, we probably couldn't lawfully do it anyway. But the important thing here is to, is that the people who are here tonight may not be the people that are going to be active on this going forward. A contractor will be involved too. And maybe not not Mr. Whitney and and so on. So it's useful, I think, to to have some procedure or other, even if it duplicates other requirements, to make something specific and to draw attention to them because it's an important part of of maintaining the structure going forward that'll minimize the amount of conflict that exists over what will inevitably be disruptive, at least for a certain period of time. And if 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 there's something we're asking somebody to do that is really unwise, we shouldn't do it. Otherwise, I think we should go forward to in an attempt to do this. And maybe the board should be thinking itself about different ways of going about doing that as we deal with similar situations in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Whitney?
Thank you. As I said, I don't think any of the conditions we brought up pose any undue constraints on on us. They're all reasonable points. They're all things we likely do in any event. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Then with that in mind, do we have a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
I move that the board approved this application subject to the conditions that we've previously discussed.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Do I have a second from the board?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Revolak. So with that, I'll take the roll call vote of the board. Mr. Dupont?
I.
Mr. Hanlon?
Hi.
Mr. Mills?
Hi.
In the absence of Mr. Awkward, Mr. Revolak?
I.
And the chair votes I. Which is an approval of the decision, excuse me, on a special permit for fifty-three Pine Ridge Road. So we will have a decision written up and that decision will be voted on by the board. Hopefully by the twenty-fifth, if not before. I hate to see Mr. Hanlon smiling, knowing that I'm putting pressure on him during town meeting and forty B's. But we'll get the written decision back in front of the board as quickly as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Thank you so much to all the the neighbors and the the applicant for all their their comment and input this evening. I think it was really very valuable to all of us. That brings us, that was the last hearing of the evening. I just wanted to just review for board members and anyone else who would like just upcoming meetings. So yesterday, Monday, May tenth, we had received new materials from the applicant for Thorndike Place. And so we have the continued hearing on Thorndike Place will start at seven thirty PM on Thursday, May thirteenth. Tuesday, May eighteenth is the continuance on eleven sixty-five R. Massachusetts Avenue. And the Thursday, May twentieth is currently the scheduled date for the close of the public hearing on Thorndike Place. But we can discuss with the applicant on Thursday whether that is still an appropriate date. And then Tuesday, May twenty-fifth, we have a new hearing and we also now have a continuance of of the Marathon Street hearing. So we'll have those both on the twenty-fifth. And then June, Tuesday, June first is is a continuance date for eleven sixty-five R. Massachusetts Avenue. And that hearing is scheduled to close currently on July second. And those are the dates that we have scheduled for ourselves.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Moore?
Oh, yes, Steve Moore, people on the street. Those are all at seven thirty.
Those are all at seven thirty.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And for those of you who are finding their Monday and Wednesday nights boring, we have town meeting for the rest of you who'd like to join us. It's going to take forever in a day. Okay, so that is the that was the, so Pine Ridge Road was the last item on our agenda for the evening. So at this point, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everyone for their participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals. Appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting, especially wish to thank Rick Valo, Redley, and Vincent Lee and Kelly Lineham for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting. Please note the purpose of the board's recording in the meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of the proceedings. It is our understanding that reporting made by ACMI will be available on demand at ACMI.tv within the coming days. If anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town-arlington MA.us. That email address is also listed on the ZBA's website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Do I have a second to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Mills. Mr. Dupont?
I.
Mr. Hanlon?
Hi.
Mr. Mills?
Hi.
Mr. Revolak?
Hi.
Mr. Ford?
Hi.
The chair votes I. Board is adjourned.
Thank you.
Night.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Very nice.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Can I, can I, Rick?
Good night, all.